We're going to begin tonight's meeting with a pledge. Thank you all for standing. My pledge and we give you the flag of the United States of America. Intuitively, totally, one nation, one nation, our common good. Do you realize that we're standing?
I'm pretty sure we're standing.
Yeah, that was true. We're going to begin tonight's meeting with a public hearing to consider a proposed local law to amend Section 242 specifying regulations for food trucks. Could I have reading proof in publication?
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to Section 7-706 of the Village Law of the State of New York in pursuant to resolution of the Village Board of the Village of Baldensville adopted June 20, 2024, a public hearing will be held by the Village Board of the Village of Baldensville at their regularly scheduled meeting on the 18th day of July 2024 at 7:30 p.m. to consider a proposed local law to amend Article 242 of the Village Code relating to the regulation of seasonal sales of food from an outdoor location, including the use of motor vehicle, and to specify regulations relating to sales from a food truck. A copy of the proposed local law may be examined by any interested party by contacting the office of the Village Clerk by order of the Village Board of the Village of Baldensville dated June 21st, 2024, at Baldensville, New York.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal? Hearing no one, is there anyone wishing to speak against the proposal?
You go first.
Me, over.
Hello, for, good evening, everyone. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Mike Johnson, the owner of W.T. Brews here in the Village. And I just want to kind of speak to some items, like the board to consider, that will direct, be a direct result of the ordinance. I've reached out to talk to the head of the Syracuse Food Truck Association, as well as other food truck owners in the area. In all of Anadogut County, there is only one other village or town that has something to this effect, and that's North Syracuse, which I think you're all well aware of. No other township, village, or any other entity in Anadogut County has any type of law or code in regards to this. The direct result of North Syracuse having this code, which has been confirmed by the Syracuse Food Truck Association President, is very few, if any, food trucks operate in the village of North Syracuse. And I can speak to that as a business owner that's talked to other breweries. Full Board North Syracuse, that used to be there, they rarely have food trucks, direct result of the code that was enforced there. McGraw Box Brewing, they opened up a satellite location in North Syracuse. They had maybe three or four food trucks this entire year, and they've had none in the last two months, direct result of the code in North Syracuse. I will say, we start booking food trucks at the very beginning of the year. This year, I have the least amount of trucks booked that I've ever had in the seven years doing it, and it's basically because the food trucks have so many options and places they can go to. So I have a very difficult time getting them to show up. If you, no matter how much you water the code down, it's going to be viewed as restrictive or a risk to these owners, and the direct result will be, it's just going to dry up food trucks in the village. If that's the intent of the code, it will be successful at that. As a business owner, I have an interest, obviously, in it, but I will adapt. Who's not going to probably be able to adapt to this code if these things dry up is going to be the community organizations and nonprofits that rely on food trucks for their fundraisers, like Seneca River Days, Taste of Beville, all this stuff that's going on on Paper Mill Island, which I think is fantastic, by the Baldensville Center for the Arts. Very likely, they're not going to be able to get food trucks. I'm going to have a difficult time getting food trucks, which I'll adapt, but it will cause issues for things that I like to do. For example, next Tuesday, we're doing a fundraiser, suicide fundraiser. I've got Old Coast Lobster coming. I probably won't get them if this code goes into effect, and I need those types of food trucks to do activities that I like to do, which is fundraising activities. For, for example, this is suicide for a member of the village, and I think we've seen that issue here. It's going to be a big problem, I think, for community organizations. I'm not sure if that's the effect that people are looking for on this. If it's, if it's a reason to try to generate revenue, the food trucks are just not going to be here, there'll be no revenue to be generated on it. So my concern, some of you may not be aware, I have a full-time job. The brewery is really kind of like a hobby they got out of control. I use it more for a charitable type of thing, to be involved with the community on that. So while it will maybe possibly affect my model, I really am more concerned about how it's going to affect the community, nonprofits, the, you know, the things that are going on in the village, and it will have a direct result and drive those things up. And I want you to, you know, maybe take into consideration those types of things that are going on. North Syracuse, like I said, is the only one, direct result, next to no food trucks. If you, you could go to McGraw Box North, check their social media, you see that nobody's been there in two months, and I know personally speaking to them, they can't even get anybody to show up. So that's pretty much all I want to say, is I really feel that this will be a detriment to the types of activities that go on in the village, and a detriment to the Chamber of Commerce, to the Rotary Club, to the Baldensville Center for the Arts. And, I mean, Paper Mill Island being used right now, a lot of its family-oriented stuff, they're going to, they come up for the food trucks, you know, and the other events that go on there. So that's pretty much all I want to say, just want to consider it, but I am positive, from what I've seen, that this will put an end to pretty much 90-plus percented operation of food trucks in the village, so.
Quick question.
Yeah?
Because you're kind of an expert, you get a lot of food trucks coming through. Are those all inspected by the Health Department?
Oh, yes.
That would be my question too, pardon me. That was going to be my question too.
Oh, yeah.
What, what other costs is the county imposing on these people that are coming into the village?
They're, so they're...
On top of that?
They're no different than a brick-and-mortar store. So they have to get an inspection and a permit from Anadogut County Health, just like a restaurant does. As a matter of fact, I had one food truck canceled on Friday because they weren't in compliance with the code with Anadogut County Health. So they have to comply with it, and they also have to comply with fire codes.
Fire protection.
Yeah, so they're, they're inspected every year, and they're inspected, they're not just running out there rampant on that. And to be honest, I don't know, I think Mary Ann can maybe speak to this. And a lot of times, some of these food trucks are when we do events, have big events, Anadogut County comes out, Health Department sometimes does spot checks on these folks as well.
I'm sure they're there every time.
Yes. So they're fully inspected by the Health Department, and they're fully inspected for fire code, obviously, for, for what they have there. And then, of course, you know, they also have to comply with the New York State DMV. The vehicles have to be inspected to make sure that they're roadworthy and so forth. So they're fully inspected and checked, if that's the concern that the village has on that.
That's a concern of having them register with us, that we have that verified.
And...
And that, that code exists?
Yeah, and you, I understand, you know, the village has a right to protect their interests and do that. On the flip side, you know, the Food Truck Association, they've also got a right to no longer operate in the village. And, you know, that's everybody's free, freedom of choice, but I, I am positive. For example, you know, a lot of people get concerned, brick-and-mortar versus these food trucks. These food trucks are not cheap. These guys are heavily weather-dependent, and they have to prep and make their food many times, elements of it, before they even show up. They have a rain or washout, they've lost, they could actually, it's not uncommon for them to not do well profit-wise, or even have a loss based on their food and all that. So if they feel even, no matter how much you water down or add a permit, where they're worried about showing up in the village and getting inspected and possibly not being able to do a sale, and they've already prepped and got money invested, they're just not going to risk it, because they've got so many other places they, they can go. And as I mentioned, we, we don't go too crazy on it, but I have not been able to fill in just Fridays and Saturdays this year, because there are so many, even though there's so many food trucks, there's so many places for them to go where they can make a buck, they're just going to move on to greener pasture, shall I say. I'm just positive that it's going to happen, and I'm just in concern for a lot of the community fundraising events that go in here, that they're going to be severely impacted by that. For, you know, the suicide fundraiser, if I didn't have Old Coast Lobster there, it would severely impact the money I could raise for our suicide fundraiser and all that. So while I could adapt and find other ways to provide food to my customers, the ability to have that from time to time for fundraising activities, it's, it's just going to, that doesn't affect my bottom dollar, but it affects my whole purpose for doing the business in the first place. If I can't do the charity work that I want to do, you know, it starts to question, what's the point of being set up to do these types of things, so. And that's pretty much all I had to say. I don't know if anybody had any other questions on the food trucks that think I might answer?
I got a random question that's not specific to this, but what do we do when the ding-ding man comes to the neighborhood, or the skippies guy? It's the same difference, just they're rolling. What do we do with those? I mean, they come to my neighborhood whenever they feel like it. It's not a schedule, but we, we don't do background checks, and sex offender checks, and handsome checks, and all that. Ice cream's good, too.
They're not covered on the bill.
It's a food truck.
No, it isn't. As Mike alluded to, people, food trucks are either preparing food, or it's prepared, they're selling frozen concoctions. And when I look through the law, that's the difference. They're not, they're selling a pre-manufactured thing.
How do you differentiate the skippies guy who was on the island last week, which is where my grandpa went to go?
Yeah, I think when you read, I read the code a little while ago. I don't think it, it's even, almost seems a little vague on even like, for example, the big chill when people, like, the local establishment show up. Now they've become a mobile entity? I'm not even clear whether they're supposed to be included now in, in the way the code is written. And then there's also, you know, I can't speak to it, I'm not a lawyer, but it seems like you, it's written also, the code, that you could choose for any reason you see fit to deny a permit, but, I mean, you have to have some sort of just cause or something outlined for denying permits as well. So the code in itself is kind of vague, I think, in certain aspects, and that, that will also, you know, create concern with the food trucks, of why would they want to risk coming? It's not even clear to me on the level of inspections they may be subjected to as well, whether it's a one-time inspection, or do they have to get inspected every time they set up and plan to operate?
It's just like with the Health Department, the proposal was, they can inspect any time they want to.
Correct.
It's not once they can inspect. And the same thing with our codes officer could inspect all codes.
Without Anadogut County...
Doesn't see a problem, isn't probably going to come back.
Without Anadogut County Health, though, and the fire code is very specific, those codes on what they need to comply, and those guys have a good understanding of what they need to do to pass, you know, if they get a surprise inspection. The code here with the village, it's kind of ambiguous, so they're, they're going to have a concern, it's like, what could I end up being violated, or what could I be shut down with?
There's a specific sheet on what the codes enforcement officer, it's the, it is the fire code.
Which they're already inspected for.
So you only book people who are out of that association?
I only deal with people that are in the, yes, I don't, I only deal with...
They're self-regulating, but if Ruth showed up with her food truck?
They're...
Well, I don't know if she's legal or not.
Well, we, we vet everybody on that, on that through the Syracuse Food Truck Association, and they, well, they can't just, they can't just show up, they're in violation with Anadogut County Health and with the fire code. So at that point, I mean, you, it's a matter of, you know, you could ask for proof of their permits from Anadogut County and fire code. I don't see an issue with that, to request them on, on demand, but we only use, you know, licensed food trucks, which I think pretty much everybody does. I mean, it's, to follow your thing, I mean, that's like saying, somebody just shows up at Paper Mill Island like me and just starts selling beer. How do you know they've got a license to sell beer? You know what I mean? They, they had, I had applied to you to get a permit to operate the food truck, they had to apply for a permit, and I, the odds of running into a bad faith actor in that regards, I think that's a very small risk of somebody just randomly setting up a food truck and operating without the proper permitting. There's such a huge investment in doing a food truck, I don't know why you would risk running without the proper permits. That's a small part of your total investment. I mean, these food trucks are $50,000, $60,000, $100,000 to not go to get your food, your permit, or your fire code, which is insignificant, is, seems kind of crazy. That's all I had to say, so I'll relinquish this. I'm going to go.
Apparently, Mike, oh, sorry, Mary Ann Williams, Greater Baldensville Chamber of Commerce, he, actually, without prompting, said about half of what I planned to say, but actually, as I read it, it doesn't say anything about how the food is prepared, or if it's pre-prepared. It just says "food." Food vendor. So I take that to mean that vendors at the farmer's market would be included. And then I don't understand why a food vendor at the farmer's market would be subjected to different regulations and license requirements than, say, the person next to them who's selling candles. Much less background checks in some of these things, we don't do that for the employees of restaurants, who are here all the time, or any other retail establishment in the village. There's a, the language in this law is vague, and in some places, just downright troubling.
May I ask you what you're referencing?
What do you mean, what am I referencing that you're...
Talking about, are you talking the existing code?
Yes.
Okay, and that's why we're having a public hearing of the possibility of modifying that with?
With what?
With a second code that we put forth.
Well, if you'd like me to wait until citizens' comments, tell you why I think the existing code is, is not good?
Oh, you can go right ahead, but I just wanted to make sure you understood what we were doing.
Well, I, I tell you, no, it wasn't real clear how this was being amended and what was being discussed tonight. For instance, it was already came up about licenses can be refused based on the opinion of the village clerk, which, if I were the village clerk, I would not want to be placed in that position. It's very uncomfortable and very subjective. The license can be revoked if the village board determines that a vendor is an undesirable person. What is meant by this, and what is the criteria for being undesirable? And as I said, as written, this law will apply to any seasonal food sales, except by the parties, which do not invite the public to attend, or block parties approved by the trustees. This means, as I read it, it'll apply to children's lemonade stands, Girl Scout cookie stands, Boy Scout popcorn sales, vendors at the farmer's market, Boy Scout lobster sale at Mercer Park, and as Mike was talking about, and it's going to apply to any food truck that's here for a charitable event, such as Seneca River Days, Our Taste of Beville, the Peony Fest, anything like that. Also wondering if it applies to church barbecues. So I would just say, if you're going to amend this law, amend it. Go back and rewrite it.
Jim Dale, Saturday, Swoogle Street. I'm wearing my Baldensville Center for the Arts cap at the moment. I just want to pick up on something that both Mary Ann and Mike both said. I am concerned, as you do an amendment for this particular piece of code, that you consider the implication of fees that are applied. I understand that the intention is to get food trucks to be in compliance with the county health codes and fire codes. I had a conversation with Nick Sanford, he is the current president of the Food Truck Association, and he was concerned that if we, that if individual municipalities applied fees and for licensing, it would, without a doubt, deter them from cooperating with charitable organizations. As it is for every event that the Baldensville Center for the Arts has planned for this summer, tonight is a good example, there are six to eight food trucks sitting on Paper Mill Island right now, and it was my understanding, after talking to code enforcement officer, at any time, those trucks could have been pulled out of this event, and we would have been at the loss for the, the revenue that we generate from them. We keep that revenue from those food trucks at a very reasonable rate, they pass it $100 to appear, and if that event seems poorly attended, we don't collect that fee from them, but if they also had to have a licensing fee, or a permanent license with the village, there's no way that any of them would have come. And it's just the bottom line is, I spoke to a handful of them at our last event, and it would have been just a total deterrent for, for show out for charitable organizational events. And as you consider your amendment to this code, please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Jim, for me tonight, can I get Nick's contact information if you've got?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Can I get Nick's contact information from you?
Oh, yeah, Nick Sanford, sure. Yeah, it's my phone. Any, any questions about that?
Good evening, Matt Hunt, President, Greater Baldensville Chamber of Commerce. I'd just like to echo and support what Mike said, as a business owner here in the community, and Mary Ann, our executive director. There's already a layer, a very stringent layer of permitting and licensing for these folks to be in the county. I don't think it's necessary to add another layer of paperwork and cost to them, specifically for chamber events and other events that take place on the island and in parks. We have to get certificates of insurance from them, we have, we charge them fees. They're already doing a lot of other things, and I just don't see any reason to impose additional requirements on them when they're already complying with the county. I don't know what the village needs to do beyond that. So I think it'll be a huge deterrent to food trucks and tourism in the village, and it's a bad idea, and you should consider everything that people said here, and also just make it a little more clear here with that. So we've been doing, I've been doing this for, I think, nine years with the Chamber. We've had a lot of different food vendors in this community. They love to come to this community, people love to come out and support the community. Many of our events are charities, such as Peace Inc. right here in town, Rotary, UNA and A. So I think by adding this in, you're taking a lot away from the tourism, and the opportunity for the events in the community, and you're taking away from our citizens and our nonprofits and charities, so, thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to, what are we doing? Speak in opposition? Hearing no other comments, state a motion to return and close the public hearing? Motion.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hear it. I'll move on to the regular meeting of the Village Board, kind of by motion approving the Village Board minutes from June 20th to 20th, 24th. Motion.
Second.
Any additions, deletions, comments? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hear it. Now time for public comment. Anybody wishing to address the board, speaking to any items on the agenda?
Mary Ann Williams, Greater Baldensville Chamber of Commerce, want to tell you what's going on in August. We've got a lot. Starting with Thursday, August 1st, we're doing our an after-hours event at W.T. Brews, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Then Tuesday, August 6th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., we're doing a ribbon cutting and after-hours at the new location of Katrina Lynn Portrait Art. Wednesday, August 7th, at 9:30 a.m., we do our monthly coffee talk at Latresse Salon and Spa. Wednesday, August 14th, at 11:30 a.m., we will have our monthly luncheon at Angree Smokehouse. That does require pre-registration and payment. You can check our Facebook page, or send an email message to me at baldensvillchamber@gmail.com. And then on Sunday, August 18th, at 1:00 p.m., we will have a ribbon cutting through the newly renovated American Legion Post 113.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jim Dale, Baldensville Center for the Arts, keep it going. I'm just here to bring you up to speed on the events that are going on at Paper Mill Island. We've had quite a successful run so far. If you are out for 4th of July, in particular, I wanted to comment on the Red, White and Blue Kids Parade. I think the count was officially 63 children, and their parents came out, Mike was out there. You were there, too, right?
That was my brother, by the way.
Oh, that was your brother?
Yeah. He looks like me, but he's a lot older.
That's not what he said, no.
Actually, actually, I think two or three of my brothers are rather...
Oh, okay. We all look alike, that's what I'm going to tell you.
They probably made up half those kids.
Yeah, well, in any case, that was a very successful event. It was great to see, I'm going to give some credit to the, to the vehicle police, they came out, they did their safety talk, it was really nice. But the most important part was the anecdotal response from the parents. They loved the event, they, they asked repeatedly, we hope that this is going to happen every year. It was just a great community feel to have them come out prior to the, the exact activity. By the way, we've devised about 1100 people out for Atlas and the fireworks in the park, as Eric and I know from running back and forth and getting those tickets. And then, of course, the streets swelled with the citizenry that were there to see the display. In general, the free events have been bringing anywhere from 150 to 200 people out for the concert events, but the food, truck, and music nights have been slightly larger, anywhere from 150 to 300 people, depending on the number of food trucks and the music that's playing. Questions about that? I'll give you an update the next time we need.
Are you planning, I heard or saw another fireworks program later in the...
Yes, yeah, we have, right at the moment, we're, right after the next board meeting, we're discussing putting fireworks out for Labor Day weekend. We're seeking a sponsor for that right now, and if we can retrieve that sponsor, that is our intention for the all-day festival there. This Saturday is Shake's Beer, beer from W.T. Brews, and lots of comedy. I just saw the rehearsal last night, it was hysterical, so come on out.
You're going to close to finalizing fireworks, and make sure you're in touch with the chief and the post office and...
Yeah. We, I'm pretty sure we filed everything we needed to file for 4th of July, we all knew we were in compliance with everything, spoke to Tim, everything was good. It's Hired Technica, who's been out in the village many, many times before, so they know exactly what they need.
Just draws a larger crowd, too, Dylan, we've got to make sure we have the staffing power, too, for that to...
Yeah, for public safety.
Yeah.
It wasn't a surprise, I think it was on the calendar earlier, but...
Oh, no. I'm just saying, the next one, if it happens, the more we know, the more we can plan.
On the side note, I just wanted to ask, does the village have any, any intention, or are you making any plans for improvements in Balden County Square? The board is trying to decide whether or not to have the harvest stands on Paper Mill Island, or in the, in the canal square, there is a drainage problem. I wish Maggie was here, because we had, had a conversation about it, and she reminded me to bring it up at the next trustee meeting. The, it's hot cave, it's more of a bowl than it is a mound, so when you, if you work at the events there in the rain, I'm usually standing ankle-deep in, in water after a little bit. Just, just don't bring it off that.
It was a parking lot, isn't it?
It was a parking lot, but you can throw some dirt on it and, and move the rocks around, create a channel from the middle, that drains some way down the river, but it's, it is a problem for holding that kind of an event there. Those walk happens under the tent, and if we were to put a tent for harvest, dance, I anticipate that in early September, we might run into some rain, and then we're dancing in the water.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board?
Mike Motti, West Tennessee Street. Former island promoter, somebody you may know, or not. I heard rumor Chuck might be retiring, and now I look at pending business, and I don't know if I should be here tonight or not. We go way back when I was doing concerts at the fair. We brought in the fire department to do the chicken barbecue to help out with all the BGM concerts and I met Chuck then. And then as years went on, I met Chuck through his elderly Baldwinsville and I started doing concerts on the island and we learned a lot from each other back then. I like to think that I set some expectations out there and when I wasn't there, Chuck carried on those expectations. And if it didn't go Chuck's way, there was three words that you didn't want to hear Chuck say. You have to concede. Chuck would say, "Here's the deal." Right? "I have a boss." So when I would come back on the island doing my shows, we had some nights where, so we know when Chuck would come out, security would call from the gate and say, "Here comes Chuck in Wanda." That's what we used to call a little sound meter that Chuck carried. And there was nights there, I think I had more employees than paying customers, so things went by the wayside. We're missing security, it's a little noisy. Chuck would come out and, "Mike, come here." He'd say, "You know what?" He goes, "You know the deal." Right? We had some disagreements over the years, but Chuck has always had a level. I don't think he's ever raised, got out of line, raised his voice with me, had an argument. And it never diminished my respect for Chuck and all the responsibilities and going above him beyond all the years. And I just want to thank him for that. And if I can indulge maybe one more story, which I tell everybody, in Chuck's demeanor. It was years ago, we were getting ready for fireworks on the island, 4th of July, and it's mid-afternoon and this big fifty-foot boat comes through the lock and they proceed to tie up on the island side. So I go over and play, like I mentioned, gentlemen, I quickly saw in vision Girls Gone Wild and Beville and Rendition that night. And I just mentioned the individual, the captain, and said, "You really can't, you can tie it for now, but you have to leave at four o'clock." "No, you don't know, I got permission from the Canal Corporation, I can stay here." So I called Chuck and said, "Chuck, what are you going to do?" He's like, "Should I call PD?" Or, Chuck says, "No, come on, Chuck, don't..." So here comes the red truck and Chuck goes out, goes up, starts to talk to the captain and he proceeds to tell him, "I got permission to tie up here." And Chuck's like, "Listen, you know, here comes the three words, 'Here's the deal.'" Right? "Four o'clock, you're gonna move your boat over there. If you don't do it soon, you're not gonna have a spot on the wall. You have to tie it in low side." And this guy didn't want to hear anything of it, right? Finally, he looks at Chuck and says, they're going back and forth and Chuck held that demeanor. He looks to him and he says, "You don't know who I am, do you?" And Chuck looks at him and says, "Nope, but I bet you're dying to tell me." I remember that. And it took this guy and he just diffused this person, right? Long story short, they went back and forth, he wasn't gonna move, so Chuck turns around and says, "Not a lot." Chuck says, "I'll put in a call to PD, I think he wants to introduce himself to the police department." So they proceeded to come out and, you know, eventually that person moved, but ended up being a good night after all. But I just want to say, you know, thank you for all the years, Chuck, for all your help out there and I wish a great retirement. We can, you know, tell some more stories and make some more memories.
There you go. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
So who was this person?
It was someone from, just, he just, he came from Southern Beach and he says, "This is state law, I can stay here as long as I want." And it was one of the bigger events that Michael's having out there and the other side was getting full and we, that side is up for the promoter, the promoter takes care of that, you know, that's his responsibility for whoever's on that boat, goes back to whoever's running the island. And he just wasn't gonna leave and then finally, we convinced him to leave. Voting rules are different, you know, and if they, sometimes I think they know a little more about them and it's all been an educational thing, it certainly has.
Okay. Are there any other public comments? We have a special presentation from Carl Chapman. The mic is yours, sir.
Thank you, Carl Chapman, Frawley Drive and through Western Church. We'd like to seek permission to block out part of Frawley Drive, a block party that the church is having. I got some map here. On August 10th, from Downer Street to Wilkinson Place, as you can see on there, we own two of the three houses in Wood Effect. We're trying to have, gonna have a block party from 11 to 3 on Saturday, August 10th. Just looking for permission to block that part of the street off.
And Carl, this is something you've done...
Yes.
...several years.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We checked with, let the person that owns three Frawley Drive tell them we're gonna be having it, never fine with it. They'll live there, but got it. They said it was fine.
No, that's the same question I asked that year. You know, please do not do this, man.
We're not serving alcohol, we're not charging event, we're not charging admission.
No, I have no issues with this whatsoever. I think it's wonderful.
I don't think we've ever had a tweet have to come.
Only as guests, not as, not as uninvited guests, but invited.
So, trustees, have any other questions? Do we need a motion?
It's number A on the agenda.
Okay.
Trustee, if you'd like to add anything, just...
Yes, we'll pass it, then.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustees' comments. Let's start with Don.
Okay, well, excuse me, my voice is a little hoarse tonight. I just want to report that Chief Lefencheck and Trustee Ryan Engel and I had a very productive meeting with Senator Rachel May concerning the issues with getting flashing beacons at various crosswalks in the village. And also, we had a long discussion, it was really primarily Chief Lefencheck because he knows a lot about this and I sort of deferred him, let him take it, about, you know, coming up with a better way for pedestrians to negotiate the four corners safely and quickly and comfortably. And Senator May was very, very receptive and I sent a follow-up email to her legislative assistant and I haven't heard anything from them since, but I know, you know, she's very, very busy. But I will keep following up on this and, you know, see if we can make any progress. And that's it.
Mr. Collins?
Well, it's, it's his last official meeting, I suppose, so Chuck, we, the Village of Baldwinsville thanks you for your service and for everything you've done. I've known you, our family's known you for a long, long time. I thank you for allowing me to put our lacrosse ball over across the street from my parents' house, right in the village, you know, that big grassy area and stuff.
We had them all around that for twenty-some years, then they had kids and we had people on it.
I know. It was very heavy. It was made from like chrome steel from Crucible or something, but, you know, that's what Dad had for welding and everything, so. Anyway, just, you know, you've done a lot and, you know, it's gonna be a big, big, big shoe to fill here, so we thank you and, you know, good luck with everything else you do get on the boat and everything, so.
You're up.
Okay. I'd kinda like to echo what Nate was saying to you, Chuck, as well. And thank you so, so much for all your help with the tree lighting parade of lights and that's a huge thing too, so. And glad you're gonna be around too. Other than that, just the agenda.
I'm not gonna say anything to Chuck because I'm gonna be voting yes on item C. So, no, you can say goodbye, just see you later.
See you later.
Other than that, I just want to thank everybody for coming out to Margarita Fest. It was a tremendous day, the weather was perfect. There hadn't been a thousand people downtown. The Volunteer Center raised over ten thousand dollars in one five-hour period and we're greatly appreciated. If you don't know where that money goes, go to the Volunteer Center's website. They'll tell you all the programs that are run on the Volunteer Center and it's quite extensive. You'd be happy to know that your money is being well-spent. And thank you to all the people who participated. And that's it.
Okay. Moving on to trustee Ryan.
So, and don't forget this, Chuck. I would like to add a motion to extend Chuck's health insurance for one additional month. Is there any other wording I need for that, Bob?
That's about it.
That's about it, okay. So we're gonna add that to the agenda, I mean. Chuck, first New Year is my neighbor, like, and I got to be here on the board and you taught me so much and it's amazing how many different hats you wear and, you know, the one thing I really always stuck out to me is the pride and dedication you have towards this community and how much, how proud you are of Baldwinsville, we call it home. He took me around to show me all the different, you know, where water comes from in essence. You know, you realize how much work goes into and there's times where he's just, you know, always gotta be on call almost at times and guys are going down there on Christmas, I'm sure Chuck has been down there on Christmas Day to, just to check out, make sure levels are proper and, well, we're all getting saved drinking water and those are things we kind of take for granted sometimes and I really appreciate, you know, all the dedication, Chuck, that you've done for the village and the residents and you'll definitely be missed, but I will also just see you later, so then we'll be voting on extending you, so. And we see you around the neighborhood as well.
He wears all those hats so we don't get sunburned on this.
Oh, okay. And then I have one more thing to add here. My daughter, the Rainbow Fish, would kill me, is that SpongeBob SquarePants is being put on at the Baldwinsville Theater Guild, so if you go to baldwinsviletheaterguild.org, SpongeBob SquarePants the Musical is gonna be at the First Presbyterian Church at 64 Oswego Street, 7:19, 7:20, 7:25, July 26th, July 27th, that's all at seven o'clock. And then there's matinee performance, July 21st, at three o'clock. These are, they are ticketed performances, but they are, they're actually youth from all over the area that come together. They've been putting a lot of hard work into it and it's amazing the talent we have in central New York, so go check that out and also...
Can you repeat the scientific, baldwinsvilletheaterguild...
Dot org.
Yep.
And that's it for me.
Okay, very good. I'm gonna vote no on item C. I did want to remind the voters, we're well into the voting season and I know it's, Chuck brings comments to me on virtually everything in the village. One of them is, some voters tend to regard the dock as a permanent docking facility. If you are a local boater, state laws, you've got forty-eight hours on that wall, you've gotta move. It's for people moving through the canal system, it's not a private dock. Other thing I wanted to point out, we had an inquiry about, does the village have regulations regarding e-bikes? No, we do not, but New York State does. E-bikes are not allowed on sidewalks. Okay? They don't belong on the sidewalk. I've had them drive faster than me on my car on the sidewalk. So just a reminder to that. Also, if you're a parent putting somebody under sixteen on an e-bike, they've gotta have a helmet. It's not scrambling any young brains. Moving then on to Chuck. I had to, no.
Oh.
I'm just gonna say a brief thank you, I'm not gonna, we had an in-house kind of goodbye to Chuck. The only thing that I want to say is, I repeat from up there, was that, in my opinion, I've watched Chuck for years now here, I've had the pleasure of working very closely with him since he's become the superintendent of public works, since my career with the village has been on the public works committee since nineteen ninety-something or other. The man bleeds Baldwinsville. I mean, it's not just red blood, it's the village. An example, you mentioned twenty-four-hour call. Chuck was sharing that he got a call, I think this weekend, past weekend, that the water tower levels were dropping rapidly. And so there's, what's happened? Do we blow a water main? So he's got his little machine, he gets ahold of his fellow water department people and they go over and checking in, nothing was wrong, except that with the fluoride treatment, I think it was fluoride you mentioned.
Chlorine.
Chlorine, it hit a different level and it caused an automatic shutdown, so the pumps weren't pumping water. So our village was using all of its water but not replenishing it. Those are the kinds of things that he's very, very aware of and hopefully his successor will be equally aware of, or else we're gonna have to keep a phone on him for the next twenty years.
You can definitely have the phone back.
So, thank you, Chuck. Personally and for the community. We all know you've done a lot for all of us.
Thank you.
Moving on from that, the department heads can move over to Bob.
Nothing, the only thing is, when we get to item six, I would have some comments after the comments that came on today, some comments about the food truck law, we can discuss that a little bit, but just before, as the board was having discussions, I'd like just to say a few things on that. And other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
Village Clerk, Julie?
I just want to tell Chuck, Chuck, I will miss your knowledge of all water-related items, but I will see you Monday morning at 9:30.
Office here from nine, like, this. Chucker.
Chuck was.
We do our treasure.
Yes, two things. There's an agenda item for a budget modification, just to remind you, any questions? I'm right here. And the second thing I want to say to Chuck, it's been an absolute pleasure and, you know, Chuck and I grew up together in the same neighborhood and we were kids together there for a long time. And so, kind of been reunited being here in the village. He has an amazing understanding of what's going on here and it would be, take too long for me to delineate everything, but the thing that I like the most is he understands the money. And he understands paying for things and how bonding works and how, you know, all the different maintenance type things work and he, we're able to have a good conversation about things and we can go back and forth and he can correct me about things and I can correct him and he can remind me about things and I can remind him and it's all good. It's all, all works out good for the village, it's like a, it's like a good team and I so appreciate that. And I would encourage you, if their day does ever come that he does leave, that you consider that in a replacement, that, you know, somebody who's worked with budgets before, miniscule, that kind of thing, but I'm glad you're gonna still be here, but I'll miss you when you go. And one other agenda item, just a housekeeping item, on his, on the approval of his going forward as a seedy employee, I would encourage you to put a, some kind of a stipulation about the anticipated weekly hours on there to get, that gives it some, that gives it a, a number, as opposed to just an hourly rate and, you know, what does, what does a seedy employee consider? I don't know.
You think about eighty hours, Chuck, that sounds good.
Glad to be here, buddy.
It's just, it's just a housekeeping thing for you, it's good, it's good finance to, to set with the expectation, the anticipated expectation. That's it.
Well, thank you, Mark, but the only problem is you always have to buy on sale.
And you got two new trucks.
We did.
And a couple lawnmowers. Renee, for the senior center, I know you're gonna invite Chuck to come over.
Absolutely. Chuck is always welcome over to see us. For the senior center, we have upcoming on August 12th, our annual, fourteenth annual car show. We do take registrations up until that night, ten dollars a car. We're anticipating their usual number between thirty-five to forty cars, depending on the weather. We will have food available and non-alcoholic drinks for purchase from the canal side bistro. They will be doing raffles and some fifty-fifty ticket raffle as well, I believe. And then they will be giving away trophies and some local gift certificates donated by Beville businesses for placement of their car categories. I think they have three or five different categories that we're, that we're looking at. And then we do have music that comes from our own Beville's George Leha and friends that will be playing at the gazebo there as well. And we do have a rain date, if it does rain, for August 19th. And that's it for us.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Chuck. What's up with DPF?
Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for the kind words and I think I've been almost forty-five years with, my time with the fire department. The fire department used to be, that used to be part of the village also. And it's been a long time, it's been a great job, meet a lot of great people and it's just, it's good business and the people you meet are what would make it, you know, and I want to thank everybody. I let Mike off the hook, he's already said, Twitter said... Mike off the hook, he's already said, that Twitter friend said he's, he's had very nice things about me and I can't take that anymore. So we're gonna let Mike off the hook when it comes down.
But just nice comments.
Yeah, I know, but that's, but thank you very much. It's very, very much appreciated. Well, that's really the, the storm the other night, we really didn't have a lot of storm damage. We had one tree down, we had some flooding. We put a lot of time into our detention basins here in the last five years and cleared some amount. The Warner Ave thing that we did down there, we spent quite a bit of money down there a few years ago. That used to flood every storm. That hasn't flooded since we finished that project. The Smoky Hollow one up there flooded all the time. And that detention basin, since we dug it out, it's filling up and it's running right down like it's supposed to and we're not getting complaints up there. The, off of Cam Street from Carytown, you know, it's getting, so the waters come right over the road and a lot of those, and we dug that out, got that cleared up. Didn't have a problem with all the water we got as quick as we got. Some of the things, you know, like down the street and, and the streets, they, they plug up, but there's a 12-inch pipe and there's all the water there. And once that water runs out in 10, 15 minutes, it's, it's done. But a lot of the work that we've done in detention basins, it has, has really paid off. It's gone very well. The, so the storm trees, oh, we're doing some, we're doing some water work up on Brown Street because we wanted, we're gonna start a blacktopper here pretty soon. And they did one valve the other day, another one, they had an issue with another one. But we're gonna be doing some maintenance up in that area to upgrade some of those valves. So we'll get to the people, let them know, because we'll be shutting the water on and off during the day just to try to get those upgrades done. And they'll all be great before we get, we plan on doing Brown, Brown Street's tough shape. We plan on doing all of Brown Street. But we tried again before that, do some valve work, we don't have to come back and dig it up. But other than that, unless there's questions.
Moving on to the Chief of Police.
Thank you, Mayor. Our staff has been quite busy dealing with a couple cases that have kept them very occupied. One, obviously, it was on the media, you know, some people going to Baker High School illegally, do some damage there. I'm happy to say that both of those individuals have been arrested and identified. And the second one was, was this afternoon that we dealt with that. And then we had another location, I'm not gonna name the location specifically, because it's still vacant, but it's much more secure than what it was. But a building that a local group had ceased to use, and unfortunately we had some people enter into there, and we started to make some arrests there, about $13,000 worth of damage inside. And we're gonna end up charging probably 27 people, 25 to 30 people used, that have been inside and causing damage and spray painting and things. Our staff has done yeoman's work, really yeoman's work to, to identify them, work together cooperatively with people from different shifts and our school resource officers, because we had some video and things. And really, really good work by, by our folks and some teamwork there. So that has really kinda, I don't wanna say overwhelmed, but it's taking a significant amount of time and manpower effort and, and people hours to, to resolve these issues because they've both been pretty in-depth cases. And ones that we wanna ensure that certainly our close relationship with the school district and close relationship with this particular group, which I'll name at a later point in time. So, that's what I have for my report, with the exception that I wasn't gonna say anything further because obviously I covered the last meeting because I wasn't sure I was gonna be here tonight and then I spoke at Chuck's ceremony up there at the DPW. But there's one thing I, I need to say that really sums up what, what he's about. You'll bear with me here. 13 years ago, my late wife was diagnosed with a very rare form of ovarian cancer. And, I don't know, I think that weekend, it was, it was, it was Mother's Day, my hot water heater went and there was water all over the place. And she'd just been diagnosed that Friday, so our family was quite upset. So I called Chuck and said, you know, who, what plumber do I call? What do I do? And, cause I was a little distraught. And then a little bit later, a few minutes, he says, I'll get back. About 20 minutes later, he says, I need your credit card number. I'm at the powerworks store buying a hot water heater. And Chuck showed up with Mike Schumati and the two of them said, just, we got this. And went to work and, and took care of the problem and said, well, what do I owe you? Or, you know, just, you don't know what's the thing. So if you wanna know what kinda heart he's got, that kinda sums it up. And that's the type of person that you've had working here in, in the community for, for that, for that length of time. And I see on the agenda, we're not gonna get rid of him anytime soon, but, you know, the community's better for that. And I'm sure at some point he'll say, okay, enough's enough. But I can understand your, your reason for keeping him around, but, but that's the type of person he is. And I'll end with, with that.
Thank you. Moving on to pending business. Motion approved, you know, proposed local law to amend Section 242 specifying regulations for food trucks. If I were to make my comments.
Trying to keep Megan involved, I'm sorry.
Trying to keep Megan involved. I agreed with all your comments and a lot of them were based upon the problem we had with the existing code. And trying to modify that. There are reasons why we're looking at this. I was surprised that the chamber didn't mention any. One is to protect our local businesses, our restaurants, if you will. Part of the proposed code would address not having a Mexican food truck parked outside of San Miguel's, for example. That, just trying to protect the local interests. The other one is to protect the citizens of the community to ensure that everybody is complying with all the regulations. And the only way we can do that is if they register with the village. Same way as all trash haulers have to register with the village. Because they have to comply with specific regulations regarding recycling and stuff like that. And the only way we know they're complying is if they register. We know then who's in the village. So our attempt was, my attempt, I'm the one who did this, was to try and improve on the code that we had. Some of the things that you mentioned were specifically things we wanted to get rid of. Things where the clerk has to pass judgment on, something that's, that's not what we want our clerk to do. There were other issues. I spoke to, you're right, North Syracuse has a code, Camillus has one. Most other villages, oddly enough, don't even allow food trucks in, they're not allowed to go to Skinny Alice or not allowed to go to various villages. I can't address why. I don't know the answer to that. But so whatever. I wanted to make sure that people understood what we were attempting to do. And I would hope that we could take time to look at the existing code, the proposed code, and see if there's some common ground that we could go to if we need to. Otherwise, we need to repeal the existing code if it's an onerous piece of legislation. And I'll be quiet. Hopefully the rest of the board has things, 'cause I know our attorney has something.
I don't know what the attorney's gonna say, probably should wait, but I'll say it. I wouldn't mind having proof of insurance, having proof of their fire safety certificates and whatever they would need for a certificate from the county's first food goes. But my assumption is, and I'll have this discussion with Nick Sanford, is that in order for them to be part of the food truck association, they need to provide the information to them and they need it right about early in the year. So what I would think would be prudent, beyond some of the things that you've discussed about the Mexican restaurant, having a Mexican, you know, lobster truck in front of a lobster, you know, kind of work. Having a relationship with the food truck association where they provide all of us that information for every food truck they have, regardless of whether they have intention of being in the village or not. We have it all on file, it's all covered for the year. And we only deal with trucks in the village that are associated with the association. That we don't let a mom and pop making beef stew in their kitchen sell stuff on the island. I think that would give us a level of protection if we've got all of the stuff.
See, in the last week, or we cleaning up the 4th of July, I was in the office, we had two different calls. One, some vendor, something got canceled in Rome, wanted to know if we could pop in the 4th of July, Baldwinsville had set up. And we said, no, we didn't have a process. Another person wanted to bring a hot dog cart to town.
Which happened, it happened a couple times.
Well, I don't know.
They were out in front of the Red Mill.
This year?
No, it was a couple years ago.
Okay, that person got permission. Didn't make any money, so they didn't keep coming. So, but we just need to have a process in place, how to, how to deal with it.
And I think again, if we have that relationship with the food truck association, that we're also promoting local businesses, because they're all local trucks. So if somebody's calling from Rome and they're not a part of Syracuse Food Truck Association, then the answer's no. Then when I sell hot dogs, but they're not a part of the association, the answer's no.
I think that's an excellent idea. I really do. Cause I, you know, I think the law as it currently exists is kind of an unworkable cludge.
And it's all-inclusive, like, you mentioned, it's all-inclusive. I mean, there's little girls that sell limited menu for all the time. I don't wanna send the chief out there to bust out.
I don't wanna connect it to the association though. Because you gotta think, longer term, we've created a law here. We're not gonna, the circuit's food association, food truck association may not exist in 30 years.
Then we can amend the law. I just think that that's one place, we, it's one, it's one protocol.
As far as I said.
All the information that we need is right there and they've already got it. And in order for them, because I'm assuming they collect dues, they would promote giving that information to us to get them.
I mean, I'm fine with having a law that states something to the extent of, they've been inspected by the Anna Daga, you know, health department, that's what the requirement is, and fire inspection. And upon request, that they, they provide those certificates to us if we come to inspect.
Those trucks actually have those.
They have to be visible.
Which, which is fine, they're covered.
As long as they're visible. Every truck that's on the island now, you can walk up to them, they have their permit.
But we don't, I don't think we need copies like to see, we can walk up and see that.
Well, I think if we.
And another thing is, who's enforcing this? Like, our code department's already, clearly. And I don't see our police department coming out to have to deal with that kinda stuff.
Do we know what food trucks are coming, other than what's advertised? Have we ever had a food truck come that it hasn't been a part of the association?
Not from my own.
I'm just saying that, and I'm not disagreeing with you at all. I'm just saying that the association's already gathering the information.
There's some, there's some that do come in. They've, they've had some at WT that I think that haven't been part of the association when you guys first got going with it, right?
We, we, so as of right now, if somebody new comes along, I usually ask my other vendors that are in the Syracuse Food Truck Association, I wanna make sure I'm getting somebody that's coming to wrap it up. So I think it's an excellent idea to only use a list from the Syracuse Food Truck Association. I bet, that's how I vet the people anyways, to make sure they're applying.
That we don't vet for us. And here's, here's a kicker, which didn't ask my opinion, but I'm gonna give it. I don't think that we should be charging them anything.
I agree.
It's a dog-eat-dog world in the food truck industry. One, two, it brings a lot of people to the center of the village. It's, it's great to have them. It's not like we're having the one up in Sister, or Clay, where I went and I was overwhelmed. There were so many food trucks. Started, I didn't know where to go. But here, we keep it classy, we keep it, you know, usually five, five trucks in the dessert place. And I've been numerous times, I've seen your wife and I've seen Jim and I've seen a lot of people in the community having a blast out there. And I don't wanna lose, I don't wanna lose over 25 bucks or 30 bucks or whatever we would charge, some arbitrary number that's in my mind, essentially a money grab. We got other ways to get money. Not necessarily one that we should go down that route. Just my opinion. Nobody asks for it, but that's how I feel.
You got agreement over here. I think it has, the proposal has the virtue of simplicity.
I would disagree with you on the money grab language.
That's a little aggressive, you're right, but.
The minimal, small fee was to cover the fact that our clerk, our codes enforcement, they have to do work because the food trucks are here. It's only fair.
What is the extent of that work?
If we, if they have to be registered, she's gonna have to have copies of that registration in place.
So if we get a master list from the food truck association in the beginning of the year, it's a one-time thing and it's good for the year?
And it tells us, and we know who's coming? Currently, we have no idea who's doing business in Baldwinsville.
If, if we knew that we had all the information in place, why would it matter who's coming?
You're never gonna get everyone's, you're not gonna get, know who's coming in every...
Especially if it's changing at the level of value.
It changes, I mean, that's the thing.
It is a random selection.
I don't know that it's important that we know exactly who's coming, I just think it's important that we know whoever's coming has that information in place on file in the village.
Yeah, that's good.
And.
A lot of this started.
Does it cost me half a day? I don't know.
Half a day, yes.
It just seems like a duplicate of though, the health department's doing stuff already. They're already inspecting these things. It just seems like classic New York, regulation upon regulation upon regulation. What's in it with the business?
We're not, the business, we would never be inspecting them, we're not qualified to inspect on a health level.
But we have that kind of.
They have to prove they've been inspected. That's all they're doing.
They've already got the proof.
Yes, we can put that, just very basic, if they've provided that proof, bam, that's in the code. Then that way, if the mom and pop pulls up, they don't have that inspection done, yes, we can shut them down. That's all I need. That's the only protection I need.
And that also draws a line between, another good point, the guy selling peaches at the farmer's market and a true food truck. Then we don't have to go down and figure out how language of that.
I think it's pretty clear.
If he's selling peaches or if he's selling prepared peach cobbler, does he have to have a permit?
Yeah, but you're reading the wrong version.
You're, you're right, it needs work.
And it specifies that, say, within an event or a festival, that's not part of that.
I mean, it's still have to, there's no additional fees, because you guys are collecting fees, yes. Right? That's not in there. Whatever. I wanna hear what Bob has to say.
Well, what I was gonna say, first of all, you can table, I, I think something needs to be passed because the law as it stands needs, needs to be changed. Also, my question is whether, how much difference there is between a food truck which is connected, so to speak, with an existing facility in Baldwinsville where they're, they're not roaming, it's not a roaming food truck, it's a food truck that's outside of a, a particular area or it's on paper mill for an event. Those are almost fixed. Then you've got the food truck that comes in and goes around and maybe is in a residential district, maybe is, is in a district that they, where they shouldn't be. Maybe they're selling alcoholic beverages within 500, you know, who knows. So I'm not sure that this delineates as much between the, what I would call the fixed mobile home sales as opposed to the roaming mobile home. And maybe that's something we could talk to the, the association about. But I do think that, that just like roaming salespeople, we have regulations in the village that require that if you are a door-to-door salesperson, no matter whether you're selling vacuum cleaner or, or brushes or whatever, you need to register within the village. So if people are going door-to-door or going around in the neighborhoods, I think they should be registered with the village or somebody should know where they are. If they're going to be at paper mill or at an event, perhaps we need to change the wording a little bit so that whoever's having the event would infect umbrella, the, the food truck. I'm not sure how that would work, but that might be a little easier.
You're right, the current code, these solicitors and peddlers or something like that.
Right. But I think going, the, the association may have some ideas about that. So I, I would recommend that we table the, the resolution and then come back and discuss it at the next meeting.
I would. We're gonna need a motion for that.
Yes, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that. Discussion? Discussion? I would, yeah, but I would like to make sure that the trustees read both versions.
No, yes.
Go home and do some homework in the next couple of weeks. And take a pen out and edit it. See what you think needs to be done, or what doesn't need to be done.
Yeah, well, see, I mean, it might be worth, they could come into our next meeting if you'd be willing to, because we've got a lot of questions as far as, or if not, more specific, if somebody owns a food truck, that could explain to us.
Does he own a food truck?
He has, he has parked outside too.
So he could explain to us what regulations they've already, they already go for.
Sure.
Some of this was driven by COVID, when people started having food trucks in neighborhoods, and there was concern about what those vendors were bringing to neighborhoods.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, just a point about a taco stand, food truck pulling up in front of San Miguel's. In general, when the food truck association sends a variety of trucks out onto Paper Mill Island tonight, there could be four pizza trucks and one barbecue truck. They're, it's an opportunist kind of thing. The guys are available, they come in to bring in their trucks for this particular event, and that's generally the way the food association works. They're putting out a general call and saying, who's there?
You're doing an event, but I mean, say a food truck vendor wanted to park in the parking spaces next to the Sanoco gas station across from sales. I wouldn't want them selling Italian food. I think that would be inappropriate for staff, who is a member of our community.
But if the taco truck pulls up in front of WT Brew's, and they're, how, you know, are they five hundred feet from San Miguel's?
I don't know.
I mean.
Well, like, for example, you know, Little Twisted was one of our regulars, they were a taco truck, she was a village resident. So not to allow her, I mean, she lives in the village, she has a heavy investment, to deny her the right?
The law accommodates residents.
All right. Well, I, I mean, I'm very, I like the idea of, I understand vetting people, I agree with that. I do want people that are inspected. And I like using the Syracuse Food Truck Association, I confer with them, because I like to use local people, try to keep the money in Anadaga County. And I think any type of fee, though, or no matter how much you water it down, it will have an impact. No matter how much you water it down. I do like the idea of, maybe you require people to only use approved food truck vendors, which would be a list from the Syracuse Food Truck Association.
They'd be in compliance with the county, generally speaking. I think in my conversation with.
You do get into a little restraint of trade issue.
I do. Yes.
You know, food truck that comes to Miami, parks in somebody's driveway, that's a. No, no, it's not the neighborhood. They bring, they bring, I forget, it was tossing fire.
Tossing fire, that's Nick Sanford, by the way.
They park in around the corner, and they put out a thing on my neighborhood blog, that says tossing fire's gonna be at such or such an address.
And that's the head of the Syracuse.
That's the head of.
So just go and talk to them.
Well, no, he doesn't live in the neighborhood, but somebody in the neighborhood.
And he also sends out his minions, it's not always.
Yeah, and I'll tell you what, fifty percent of the neighborhood gets pizza that night.
Yep.
It's a potato one.
Do we want that, though?
Margaritas.
Well, that's, I mean, that's one thing we're discussing, though, is like, not having, that's almost like a roaming food truck, just setting up in the neighborhood. That's a whole, like.
I'm torn, I'm torn.
As we construct this.
I'm torn, because I see your form. The people love it, so.
That is tough. All right, stable.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Carl Chetan gave up on us. Could I have a motion to approve the road closure part of Raleigh Drive on Saturday, August tenth, 2024, from ten to four P M?
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Who's gonna ask, there's gonna be food trucks by.
Jody, if you let him know. Probably felt no food trucks, no sense in having.
Exactly.
Item B, motion to appoint Teresa Garofolo.
Garofolo.
Garofolo. To the position of neighborhood advisor outreach worker at Canton Woods Senior Center with an effective date of August seventh, 2024, at twenty dollars per hour, or thirty hours per week.
Second.
Discussion? This is a budget item, the position is vacant.
Is this, has this been vacant since Nancy?
No, I had that position prior.
You did.
It's been vacant since we promoted.
Correct.
That's one of those reimbursed by the county.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
That position's reimbursed by Anadaga County also.
Currently.
Currently.
There's two positions that are.
They reimburse both?
Yes, for legal express and for the outreach worker.
Sometime you want to talk about those, I'd be glad to talk to you about those. And then any one opposed? Just like, okay, carried. Item C, motion to appoint Chuck McAuliffe as a seasonal worker with an effective date of July twenty-second, 2024, at the rate of fifty dollars per hour, until November first, 2024. At up to forty hours a week. Is that enough? Is that clear enough?
Sure. That's good.
So Chuck, does that mean you're gonna have to pack and start doing the time card again?
No.
I know, I've always been salaried, I was never allowed to go near that time clock, because I messed everything up.
I mean, I'm hoping there's weeks that you only have to work twenty hours. So do we?
Change it to two thousand dollars a week?
No, I just wanted to be able to have you guys know how many hours it was. Not, because I don't want you to feel obligated, that if we approve forty, that you have to work forty. You're retired from the grant law. So.
I know, I know, there's people who hit it on punch clock.
If we say, if it's up to forty hours, but whether you report it, or you punch the clock, that doesn't matter.
Do other seasonal workers punch clock, or do they?
Seasles do.
Or even if it's a written time, maybe it just.
How about you report your hours per week? And then do you get paid bi-weekly, correct?
Yeah.
Yep, up to four.
I just feel like, no, Chuck, if you said forty hours, you meant you gotta look at forty hours. If it's a Friday afternoon.
So if I report my hours, if they're over forty hours, what happens?
Who's paying you?
Well, that was part of the thing, that, that was part of the thing, is it's gonna be a sound position, so when I go over that, it won't be an issue. Because there's lots of time. All weekend work is overtime. And I have no problems, you know, I have no problem doing it for that money. And currently, I get paid for, I get paid comp time for over forty hours. So.
So let's make it the.
So, yeah, straight time, right?
Yes.
So in other words, if you worked a weekend, and you worked forty-eight hours, you've got forty hours to pay in eight hours that we owe you and pay you eventually.
Right.
So why couldn't we just pay you forty-eight hours?
Well, however you work it out, but I have no problems if they do it like it's a salary, and if I go over it, so be it. It's not a problem. And I'm not looking to get paid for it.
So let's make it, let's make it, let's make it at a maximum of.
He just has to, he just has to watch his threshold of.
He's gotta stay under.
He has a certain threshold. And the reason why it's November first is because if he goes over that, then he's gonna be over the threshold that he can make in the calendar year after being retired. So.
Working for the same employer.
Yes.
Second to.
When FLSA rules apply to an hourly employee, so if he's working hourly, FLSA rules would dictate that over, what, eight hours in a day, or eighty hours in a pay period, would result in time and a half. Or whatever the FLSA rules are, but I know with our part-time people, that's what we have to go by, are the FLSA rules. So I would assume that those would apply for Chuck, or anyone else who's classified as an hourly employee, which, based upon this motion, he is.
So if we change that to Bruce's suggestion, supplement a flat rate, classifying it almost as a salaried position, would we avoid all that? And then if.
And I have no problems, I'm not worried about retirement.
And then that eliminates that whole thing completely, I guess.
And all I'm trying to do is make sure the board has an understanding of what the running expense of that is, overtime, so that even if it's just some kind of a check-in with you, where we give you a report that says, here's what the hours have been for the last, whatever, just so the board is aware of the expense, and it's not, again, like an unlimited, you know, blank check.
Well, they'll know exactly what it is, because weekly, they'll know how many, you know, unless I, unless I work over, I know exactly what it is weekly. You know, that's why.
We could just make it two thousand dollars a week.
I think that's easy.
This salary, two thousand dollars a week.
Yep, because then when Chuck's.
How many hours it takes you to do your job?
Chuck's already out of here.
When he's, when he's punched on October, at three o'clock in the morning, you're gonna have to pay overtime.
Well, exactly.
And the other, we need to work it out so that Mark can handle accountability kind of stuff, I would think.
Well, I think it's gonna fit within the budget, because we budgeted his position for the entire year. So it's just, once you get into this kind of an assignment, as opposed to a salaried employee, it just, it's different, and I want you just to be aware of it. Especially if you're searching for a replacement, and there's an overlap when you hire, then it starts to become a budget issue.
So we want to amend that? So make the motion that we amended the language from fifty dollars an hour to two thousand dollars a week, with the expectation that it's forty hours a week.
That's good.
We need to add that forty hours if he said he doesn't.
That was for Mark. Mark wants, the bean counter wants.
Let's check with Bob, if that's okay in the rule.
Yeah, they just have to be careful that you don't go over the limit.
Yeah.
Is that, okay, what we're doing, Bob, does that work for you, what we're doing?
Yeah, no, it's all right. As I say, my only concern is, as I say, going over the limit, that creates a problem with the retirement system. So.
Limit is thirty-five thousand dollars.
Once the weather gets a bit terrible, you won't be able to work, because you might be going over the system.
That'll be hunting.
Chuck, that works for you.
But that responsibility falls on the employee, not the employer.
Right. I'm just saying, with the hourly rate, it's easier for everybody to work out at the two thousand dollar rate per week. Then it's up to the employee to keep track of that, because then, regardless of how many hours he works, if all of a sudden, he's coming over that, then he can't work anymore.
Right. Or you mess up your pension.
Yeah, yes.
Seventeen and a half weeks. Get your calendar out. Do I have a second?
We need a motion.
He made a motion.
Okay.
He made a motion to amend the original motion.
I will second.
All in favor? Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor? All opposed?
I think I wiped.
Okay. Item D, motion to approve budget modifications, as proposed in the document 2024-07-18, budget modifications for 2024-2025 budget. Thank you.
I'm moving.
Second.
All, any discussion?
I'd like to see a PDF added to this. Besides that, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Item E, motion to extend Chuck McAuliffe's health insurance for an additional month. Take it through August thirty-first.
I guess it would be, I guess it would be yes.
I'm moving.
Second.
Discussion? For those of you out there, the purpose for this is, because of timing of Chuck's retirement, and his ability to get onto social security, there is a lapse when he potentially would not be covered. And inasmuch as he's been a halfway decent employee for a couple of months, we would like to extend this consideration.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed. A motion to pay bills is audited.
Motion.
Second.
All, any discussion? Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else before I ask for the next one? A motion to adjourn the meeting tonight. She says eight fifty-nine hours.
Motion.
Second.
We knew you two were.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried.